Say what? Testing, testing. Okay, mainly it looks like it doesn't want to turn off ever, so I'll just have to be quiet. Okay, sounds good. Okay, I'm gonna go off my phone fuck, not that one, cuz that one's behind. Okay, welcome to our planning commission meeting. It is February twenty sixth at six P M. And we'll begin with the pledge of allegiance led by Commissioner Jensen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll now have our roll call, uh, beginning with Commissioner Allen. Say your name and if you have any conflicts.
Ann Allen, no conflicts.
Daniel Gonzalez, no conflicts.
Melissa Kendall, no conflicts.
Lisa Jensen, no conflicts.
Parry De Soto, no conflicts.
Adam Shin, no conflicts.
And Jonathan Hill, no conflicts. I'll now read a statement on the decorum for this meeting as we get started. Although this is a public hearing, only the presenters and those invited by the commission may speak or ask questions, unless otherwise invited by the chair. Please wait to speak until called on by the chair. When speaking, please be sure to speak into the microphone so that the record is clear. Please state your name and city of residence for the record. Please limit side conversations as they interfere with the audio recording. If you need to have a side conversation, please step out of the chambers into the hall. Please do not attempt to interrupt or speak over people. Intimidating or threatening speech or behavior will not be tolerated at any time. Please refrain from clapping or cheering during the hearing. Okay, with that, we'll go ahead and move to our first item. Uh, John Jensen requests approval of an ordinance text amendment to section fourteen point seventeen D, uh, point zero twenty permitted uses in airport zones to add data centers and self-serve power plants to permitted uses and Nancy Robinson will present that.
Okay, are we good with microphones? Okay, good. So, um, the proposed amendment would apply to the airport industrial zone, the A I zone, which currently we have approximately thirty acres zoned in the city that way. The airport industrial zone was newly written and it does not use the standard four-digit standard land use codes if you wanna, I guess I have them, nevermind. Okay, so this is how it was written and, um, they don't list out all the land use codes. Instead, they've just kind of, um, made a chart there uh, saying what was permitted and not permitted in airport and airport industrial. Uh, one current land use designation on there. Uh, one says professional office, the other says professional office related to airport activities. The staff is just suggesting that amending the language to professional services except behavior, drug and alcohol treatment centers, which is, um, how other land are used designations and other zones listed, so you can see what I put there instead. One problem that we have with the data center in the A I zone is that power subst- substations are not permitted in the zone currently. And a request to include the substations was not included in that application. And then also just to bring to your attention that, uh, when you go down for the, um, section code that gives the guidelines, if you look at, uh, number C where talks about the compatibility of the proposed amendment with general plan policies. The applicant felt that this proposed text amendment would not modify or impact the general plan. But because the da- data centers consume large amounts of power and potential water, other business opportunities may not be possible. And this could potentially, uh, impact the general plan. Staff finds that the pros- proposed text amendment is a reasonable land use request. If the significant infrastructure impacts and needs can be met. And we just recommend that the planning commission recommend the approval of the proposed text amendment to the Provo City Council with the following conditions, that all issues regarding emissions and low water usage be addressed and resolved with Public Works and that they have a sufficient utility infrastructure. So I don't know if you have any questions for me.
Excellent, thank you. Any questions?
I have a question. Can you ex- what is exactly a self-serve power plant?
A power station?
Power, yes. This is power, self-serve power plant.
That would be really good question for one of our, um, public works guys.
Any other questions?
I just wanted to clarify what I think you said. So the applicant asked for data centers and self-serve power plants to be permitted uses?
No, they only asked for data centers to be added as a permitted use, but.
And so staff has added self-serve power plants?
No, we're just bringing up the fact that that would need to be added. So essentially another text amendment, or I don't know if you guys can.
Do you, do you mean power substations needs to be added? Because self-serve power plants is actually in the item description. I'm wondering if there's a difference between self-serve power plants and power substations. Mr. Pepper, do you know what I'm asking?
Yeah, the difference is, is the substation is owned and operated by the city. A self-serve power plant is privately operated. So this, um, staff has comfort level with the land use change, the professional services as described. But it's my understanding that both the power department and U M P A have had some hesitation over a self-serve power plant being listed as a permitted use.
Okay, so the request is to list those, but the staff recommendation is to modify what would be listed, okay?
I have a question. What about, um, the water use is, do you know anything about? I guess maybe this is a question for somebody else, but about, uh, the water would come out of Provo Water, I'm assuming. And what is the runoff from that look like? Uh, as far as cleaning it, I'm assuming it's not clean once it is used? Do you know anything about that?
There is something, uh, attachment to on your staff report. And this would be something probably that the applicant could answer, um, better. But they did have a, uh, listing about, about city resources and infrastructure, specifically water.
Right, but, alright, but we have to find out like what happens to the water and if it has to be cleaned after it's used? No, yes?
I, I'm sorry, I don't know that.
I think the usual, I think we're talking about here's water for cooling, it doesn't actually.
I know, but does it pick anything up or?
I don't think so, but we, I'd like to hear that from the applicant too.
And I guess our other question is how much water, right? Like, does that, we're already, people aren't watering their lawns, like, what are we talking about here? I guess those are other questions for the developer.
Yes.
If I could just clarify more about what Commissioner Jensen was talking about. So a self-serve power plant would be something like a generator on site that's burning diesel or something to create power, is that correct?
Would you go up and answer the question? Would you go up and answer the question?
Yeah, please, we'll invite you forward. Please state your name and who you're representing.
Yeah, my name's Tad Smolcom, I'm the engineering manager at Provo Power. To answer your question, you're correct.
Okay, and so that's different than a substation that is just transforming power coming off of the grid and.
Yeah, so the reason I'm here is just to express concerns, we're not really in the zoning business. But U M P A, we have an all requirements contract with U M P A, I don't know how familiar you are with, with that. But, uh, right, so they have requirements and restrictions on what others can do as far as providing power. So we, we've talked with several of these entities and they would be required to, either negotiate with us to have us supply power, which is a tall order. They're asking for a lot of power for a municipal, we're not built for that. Uh, doesn't mean they can't pay to do it, although in an airport use, um, right, we've got to bring transmission line down there, which is gonna violate the height restrictions. And the F A is gonna have some input there, plus if they build a power plant there, generally depending, unless they bring like a small nuclear, we, there's, there's tall structures for power plants. And, and U M P A will be required to own that, they, they'd be required to pay and build it. And that's also true of the substation that they would need, so they'll need a substation and potentially a power plant. Now, those are options, all of which would, would have F A A implications, U M P A implications. If we're bringing power in to Provo to supply this, then we're talking about, I gotta talk to Rocky Mountain Power cuz I wheel all of my power from U M P A, wherever that is, over Rocky Mountain lines, and that's a tall order. Not to mention E P A, uh, air quality restrictions, very difficult to get in Utah Valley. And if the city ever wanted to do their own generation, they'd be taking, uh, capacity from us if that was ever the case, and it would be in conjunction with U M P A because U M P A owns the, even the generating plant at the power department. That's a whole lot of information that we wanted to present. Whether you change the zoning or not, it's, right, does, doesn't impact us a lot. But it doesn't really guarantee that they're gonna be able to do what they wanna do with their, with their data center.
So is that different than, say, a backup generator? Cuz I have a business in Pleasant Grove, we're putting in backup generators right now. That's a different system, right?
It's completely different. In, in Provo City code, you can have an emergency generator, but it's on a transfer switch. So you're never, that generator will never be connected to our power system for safety reasons. Now, if you wanna connect something to our, our system, then that requires a license, they have to meet all kinds of construction requirements. And when they're getting big, like these data centers need, and it pulls in U M P A and that we've got, they've got all kinds of requirements that they have to meet for that as well.
Right, so do you envision these self-serve power plants would be connected to the grid in some way or unconnected?
Well, even, even their proposal states at the back end, any excess would go, could go back into the city. What requires connection and, and, I mean, uh, the decision isn't official, but if you, you know, our opinion is, yes, we'll always make them co- connect to the city. Because when they, when they go defunct or, or, or leave, well, then that, all that stranded assets, so we're gonna have them connect all of that into Provo so that, and, and per our specs, and you know what I mean, they got to meet all of our requirements. They can't just slap something up, they gotta meet Provo City's requirements before they build anything and then we will own it, so they pay for it, build it, they're using it. But it's, becomes ours and, and U M P A has, uh, stipulations in there, it's if they build a power plant, that they would take it over or negotiate who's going to run it, but U M P A would be scheduling all the power out of, et cetera.
So I guess my last question is, do we know how this is usually handled in other cities that have data centers?
Uh, that's a good question, that's where U M P A came in and they created their, their, uh, requirements. So they have, they have smaller, up to, up to fifty meg, inst- instances and then above fifty meg instances. So that's what they went and researched at Provo Power, uh, we have not, uh, interacted a lot with other cities. We're just relying on U M P A who is our all requirements.
Okay, Commissioner Jensen?
Um, I had that question, what other cities have done to prepare for and allow these, but it seems like we don't know?
It's a, it's a really hard thing for any city, right? Because you think about Provo Power, we have, our, our peak use is a hundred and ninety megawatts and that was last summer in August. And now they're coming in and asking for fifty or a hundred megawatts. There aren't any cities that are prepared to go that much over what they already have, so all of a sudden now, well, we, we're, we're happy to welcome them and we'd love to have them in because a hundred meg, you pay for a hundred meg.
It's a lot of power.
Eleven percent to the general fund, right? It's, it's a, it's a, it's a big boon to the, um, here are citizens. However, we are not willing to risk the reliability of the power system we have for our citizens to supply these. So it's a, it's a tall order to go and find fifty mags or a hundred mags. U M P A who acquires and provides all the power for Provo, um, right? They have to go out and find it or build it. Uh, and then we have to create the capacity. I can tell you, I'm building a substation, replacing a substation up at the mouth of the canyon, Gillespie Substation up above Canyon Road there. I had to order the transformers, uh, in twenty twenty-three of Jan- January, and I'll be getting them next year. That's just to get the equipment for, for the, when I have to build, so we're talking five years minimum for them to build anything or me to build anything.
Do the other municipalities then sell the power to them? Or are they, are they relying on this, these data centers to make their own? Is that the standard protocol?
I don't think they've had a lot of success finding places, we've had several come in and they just, they, nobody's built yet.
Nobody's capable.
This is not the first, right?
Okay.
It's probably the sixth or eighth or tenth.
So you said, um, that because there'll be excess power maybe that will have to be dealt with, you would like them to connect into Provo's grid?
Yes.
So how is that different than them connecting in the first place and just taking the, aside from us providing the power? Is that, cuz you had said something about height restrictions cuz you'd have to have power lines going to it, but wouldn't you still have to have the same infrastructure if it was going the other direction?
Yeah, that, so the height restrictions is a, that's an airport specific problem.
Right.
But that, we have people right now that we're dealing with in Mountain Vista, right? There's no airport restrictions at Mountain Vista. So you're just dealing with all these other issues of bringing in a data center.
So that, the infrastructure problem, whether the power's going from us or to us would be the exact same problem. There would still be power lines that were, have F A A clearance requirements.
That's correct, and, and our system has to be able to handle it. And U M P A's gotta have, they gotta negotiate with U M P A how that's gonna happen, what it's gonna cost, who's, how much U M P A is gonna pay them. For the, right, there's, there's other issues that have to be resolved.
I didn't realize, I didn't realize there was a, an authority that oversaw what Provo does with their power, even though Provo provides their own power, so that's interesting.
They're a joint action agency, so there's six, we're six member cities, uh, and Provo is the largest. And then we, we have, the mayor sits on the board and mayors of those cities sit on the board. And they, they say, hey, well, we can go out and go after the nuclear that's getting built in, in Idaho. And, right, then you, we can pursue, they can pursue that, but they pursue it for us. And so we're directing their, their movements and their work. But they, they have employees that go out, find it, create or find, uh, the resources and then figure out a way to get it to us, they have to, they're the ones that deal with the instantaneous day-to-day. Okay, I need this much right now, hey, do you have something I can buy because we're, we're coming up short?
So you're still interconnected with the other cities even though, because of that lag or whatever?
We're not, yeah, interconnections, everybody's interconnected from the wiring perspective, right? But, um, yeah, I don't know if that answered your question.
Yeah, that's, I just, that was more information gathering, so I could understand the.
Well, and all of this really is us presenting information, so you're aware that, uh, whatever the zoning decisions are, right, with power department doesn't get involved, we're, we're anxious and happy to get these people in, but it's not easy. And there's a lot of hangups and a lot of it, they want, they want fifty tomorrow. They can't have fifty tomorrow, they can't get fifty tomorrow and good luck finding it anywhere, maybe go into some bigger cities or, or maybe out in the middle of the boondocks where they don't have, uh, people like us in the way, right? It's like, okay, I'm just gonna build a power line, but it's still gonna take them years, years to, to get what they want. And we don't know how to change that for them. Um, and I'm not gonna allow them to just, uh, throw something together in, in Provo City. It's gotta, it's gotta meet a certain, uh, requirement for quality.
Okay, my last question is for Ms. Robinson, Robinson. Do you know what the reason is for the request in the A I zone instead of somewhere else where they wouldn't have to ask for a change? Is it just cuz land is cheap or because it's available? Or like, what was their reasoning for wanting to build it there?
Uh, yeah, I did not ask that question, so that probably could come from the developer.
Okay, I always wonder when there's a request for a change, why we can't just put it where it's already allowed, so, okay, I'll save that for them.
Excellent, thank you.
I've got one quick question. If everything, let's say everything worked for the height requirements, et cetera, for the airport. Does this affect the airport's, uh, ability to grow or the things? Obviously, if you can't build a hotel where a data center is, but does it affect the airport beyond that? Do you know?
As for where we have airport industrial.
Yeah, like where its ability to expand in the future, that sort of thing.
Yeah, it's kind of like, I guess, first come, first served, if somebody gets there and puts their building there, if somebody else wants to come and put hotels or other things, you know, if we weren't talking about a data center. There's a lot of agricultural land that's around there, currently all we have zoned right now for A I is thirty acres. So it doesn't mean that we couldn't add more than thirty acres to the A I zone.
I have one question, uh, sorry, were you, were you done? Okay, thank you. I, I, I'm seeing a comment from Public Works Review here in my, in this memo, mentioning a concern about how, do we know if this data center and power plant kind of concept is going to be emissions-free? The mentioned concern here is that emissions like steam would be bad for plain visibility near the airport. I'm just, to help me understand here, like, are we talking like, you know, a, a facility that has like, you know, huge amounts of steam or other kinds of emissions coming, like, is that kind of, would that be a possible outcome if, if you were to build like a self-serve power station running on, you know, natural gas or diesel, what, like, is that a concern?
It's, it sure is, it's like one of the F A A concerns that I envision, I'm not the F A A, but it's gonna be, right? There's a lot of different plants out there in the world, but you can think of it similarly to the Payson plant that you see when you drive by on the freeway there, or the one in Vineyard, right? That one in Vineyard is significantly larger.
Oh, that's what that is in Vineyard, I, oh, yeah, I was wondering what that was.
Yeah, it's a, that's a power plant, the Rocky Mountain Power owns, but it's significantly larger than they would build here. Uh, Payson would be a similar size, uh, of land.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you both. So now we'll invite the applicant forward, you'll have fifteen minutes for your presentation. Following your presentation, if we have questions, we'll ask them at that time.
Hello, my name is John Jensen. It's good to be here in Provo, uh, thank you for having us on your agenda. We appreciate, uh, the work that's been done to this point, uh, of this conversation. You asked a lot of great questions, this is a kind of a crazy world. Um, if you haven't had to deal with power production or data centers, you're not crazy, it's, it's born to a lot of people and I would love to do a little bit of a small deep dive into maybe sharing some information that may educate. I think all the concerns that, uh, Provo Power shared is, is relevant. Uh, I think the Public Works and the other comments from staff are relevant. Thankfully, we've had those same conversations back, you know, maybe a year ago when we started the conversation. I would like to say there's good news. While there are concerns, I think any mega project comes with concerns, right? These projects are fairly large in capital deployment. They have a lot of equipment and they have a lot of things that need to be, uh, done to make them be what they are, so necess- it necessa- necessitates those kind of questions, so I think they're all valid and worthy. So, um, just to give you some context, Payson's power plant is four hundred and fifty megawatts. Linden or Vineyard's power plant is one point one gigawatts. Um, and we're basically anticipating one hundred megawatts, which is a lot. But it's proportionally quite a bit smaller. Um, I'd like to potentially talk to you about the, why the subject property, one of you asked that question, I think it was, uh, Commissioner Jensen. It's two reasons. These, uh, data centers want as much space as possible. They like the ability to have some elbow room around them. And if we're proposing a self-serve power plant with it, it needs that space as well, different than a normal data center would in a typical market time. Also, the second reason is cuz we own the ground, we've invested over twenty million dollars in that property. We are invested heavily in your city and this is a potential use that if it was to be a permitted use, would potentially continue to grow in total investment. Uh, so those are the two reasons, cuz we own it and we put a lot of money in it and it is in a place where there's some space for that to happen. We talked about airport function a little bit. A lot of people think when they hear about power plants, they envision Vineyard or they envision Payson, and that would be normal. These are not the typical power plants. These are not the typical power plants. Uh, power plants that we are proposing would look very similar to the actual building that the data center would be in. It would look like any tilt up you would drive down I fifteen. If you saw a tilt up off the side of the road, it would look the same. Doesn't have big cooling towers, doesn't have big smoke stacks. It doesn't have a bunch of that industrial look to it. So it fit both the architectural requirements for the area, and you may not even know it's a power plant. You're probably felt fairly familiar with your own town, but if you've ever driven by Provo Power uh, Peak Power Plant right there by the rec center. It would look very, very similar. Okay? So we're not proposing a power plant that has big turbines in it. It has reciprocating engines. And they have uh, emission controls that are far below the EPA standards, meaning they're really clean. And they exceed the emission controls of a typical um, power plant. Um, and so generally speaking, when we talk about water. In the traditional sense, data centers consume a lot of water because they would evaporate off that water to cool the CPUs, the GPUs, those things that are computing, right? So you see these big, you know, steam in the winter and whatnot. In this case, we actually use things called absorbers, and we absorb the heat instead of evaporate the heat. What that means is we don't consume water like you would typically think. So generally, when the cities say, oh, my gosh, these take a lot of water, which they typically do. We are basically saying, like your car, how much water does your car take? It doesn't take any. I mean, it takes what you put in it, and then you just leave it that way forever, right? Once in a while, you top it off. That's the exact same mentality of what an absorber does for a data center. You you collect the heat instead of evaporate the heat, if that makes any sense. Our water use is basically, in our opinion, a low water use consumer. You have bathrooms and things like that, and that would naturally be a consumption. Um, and then basically, the heights of our project are within the FAA's limits. Um, in our proposal and in our submittal, we have a letter from the FAA that there's a limit to how high we can go based on where we are. It's like sixty-six feet or something like that, and our building in the power plant would be under that, which that's one variable. Then you have the steam variable. Uh, thankfully, we have simple technologies that can extract the heat or the steam out of the exhaust stream coming from the natural gas. Um, which would be our proposal of saying if there's stresses on steam plumes. Um, that we would remove those so that those aren't uh, a condition of concern. So there are things you can do in these big projects to help maybe mitigate some of that. Um, generally speaking, this is a uh, the reason why we ask for a self-serve power plant is because the grid and the market doesn't have electrons, unfortunately. Um, data centers are growing. If you pay attention to the news, it seems to be what's in the news a lot. And data centers want to grow and they want to just compute. They just want to do their business. And the demand is just outrageous. Um, and there they want to be in lots of places, and one of the places they want to be is in Provo, which is good. And as you've heard already, um, if you don't have a lot of water, that's going to make it hard. And if you don't have any electrons, that's going to make it really, really hard. And so we basically come back to that equation and say, I already know you don't have enough electrons. That's why we want to propose a self-serve island power plant. So there's debate still. I don't think we've resolved it on how the connection to the grid occurs. We're basically saying we don't want to be connected to the grid. Because once you connect to the grid, you have to then deal with the grid. And the grid cannot handle a hundred megawatts if we wanted to do it now. The transformers aren't ready. The wires aren't ready. So we're basically saying, we're not afraid to connect to the grid. We expect more planning to happen to connect to the grid. But the data center wants to exist now, which means an island power plant could potentially be the solution, maybe. And that means we don't connect to the grid currently. We allow the power plant and data center to be built. You then have potentially about one billion dollars worth of investment occurred in your town, which is pretty big. Um, there are going to be other benefits, you know, from taxes and other things like that. But then the grid can find its way to connect itself to the power plant, whether it wants it or not. And we're trying to leave that to UMPA, which is that uh, agency that Provo works with to get electro electricity. And I and and as uh, Tad, sorry, it's Tad, right? Sorry, Tad mentioned, there's still things that have to be worked out in that conversation. Provo said, the best way to start that conversation is to ask for a text amendment. And this is to open the door to start having that conversation maybe more thoroughly. So this might be just the beginning of it. There probably could be a dozen more conversations to help the city understand the resolutions, the solutions. Um, so we're not necessarily here saying that there aren't going to be concerns. We're just trying to make a valiant effort to say this is how this would happen. And if the city said, we really don't want a power plant there, it's okay. Uh, there just will be no uh, data centers in Provo either. I mean, that's okay, too. Like, it's not the end of the world, but I think Provo partially would like it. I think there's benefits to the degree, as long as we don't consume all your water and we don't concern consume all your electrons. Data centers are good for the community, generally speaking. But if you can't get electrons, that just means they keep looking elsewhere, and that's that's not the end of the world. But right now, uh, because of our investments and because of the demand, that is a big part of why uh, they want to be here. So I don't know if I covered all the bases. There's probably more bases to cover, but I would love to answer any questions.
Great, thank you very much. Any questions?
Yeah, um, so is this a a private company that is owning this?
Yeah, the data center would own the power plant. Well.
No.
Take that back.
Owning the data center.
So the data center would be owned by a major data center that you might recognize in the news, okay? And difference of opinion with Tad. The data center would own the power plant and UMPA would run it. That's what we've been talking to UMPA doing, and that's what we expect to keep doing.
So who is the owner of the data center?
Yeah, probably not able to disclose in this meeting, sorry.
Okay, okay, sorry, I didn't know.
But it would but it would be someone with mega billion balance sheets. You get it.
Um, and so uh, does this, you were talking about using the water to absorb the heat. So then does it send out warm water into the system?
Thank you for asking that. That's great. Sorry. Um, the short answer is absorbers are just taking the heat out of the water and then recirculating water. There's never water necessarily going down the drain, other than toilets and drinking fountains and the typical human consumption, things like that. So there's no cleaning water because it's just inside its own system. The absorbers are actually technology. It's uh, fairly common, but what it does is allow you to transfer heat from the water into a different medium like like air instead of steam. Does that answer your question?
And then so there's no like w- warm water going somewhere out of it. Okay. Um. And then how much how much land is this playing to you? You said data centers want to grow. Um, does that mean that you expect to grow and have more land later?
Well, what they don't want to be is two feet away from the next building. If you want to come over where, say, this use is currently permitted, you're in places that are fairly developed. There's still land, but it's there's just things that I would say make it difficult to have enough space to want to build a data center. Space they don't normally want to be jammed in to a bunch of other existing facilities. So they like to grow, which means they just want the ability to maybe have more parking, maybe maybe they want to add another building. But if you don't have electrons, there's no growth, right? They they only have so much room for their data hall. So they want enough room to just be able to put their site together instead of trying to squeeze it in. So if that makes any sense.
Okay, so there's no plan to expand it afterwards.
Not this one.
Okay.
I yeah.
Um, okay, last question. Um, so you said you want this to be an island power plant, even though Provo Power people have expressed that that's not going to be what should happen. Is that?
Yeah, I think there's a policy that basically is trying to say, if a power plant is existing in UMPA's or UMPA's, you know, purview, Provo being in one of those. That it makes sense that it would be connected to the grid. If it it connects to the grid right now, the grid's not ready. And we're not sending out a hundred megawatts out to the grid. We're consuming a hundred megawatts. And so the only potential electrons that are leaving our our power plant would be the peaking power. It's that little bit that maybe we don't use. And I think Provo Power, UMPA have visions of how that maybe benefits the city, and I think that's appropriate. But right now, the idea is that the data center consumes a hundred percent. And so connecting to the grid may be a long-term benefit because it can help balance the grid with some of their peaking power. I don't know if that made any sense.
I don't think that really answered my question, but that's fine.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Excuse me, just to kind of wrap my head around understanding what we're talking about here. Um, so it sounds like you you are planning to use natural gas. You the plan would be to to have this be a a natural gas powered plant. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, um, just with that, what kind of um, what kind of infrastructure um, upgrades or expansions would be needed? I'm curious about like natural gas, like the infrastructure to supply with, because it sounds like you're talking a lot of power. Does that also mean we need to like upgrade and increase the supply of natural gas? Um, and also like, is there in like internet infrastructure that we like need to connect out there to like fiber optic cables and that kind of stuff to um, obviously connect the data that um, is is being processed?
Good questions. Um, I'm going to pause just one second. I have two wonderful gentlemen here, if you guys want them to come up. That are experts in emissions and experts in the absorbers and that kind of stuff. So at some point, if you need somebody more educated than me, they're ready to answer as technical as you want to go. So the short answer is on natural gas. Wonderfully, there's a huge natural gas pipe uh, pipeline going right by the airport. So we're like point four miles away from that, which isn't a terribly long distance away. We already have both the wellheads. When you when you buy gas at this level, you you don't necessarily buy from Enbridge. You go out to the wells and then you transmit it through all the pipelines to get to Utah, sorry. And um, then you work with Enbridge to get it to exit the pipe. And uh, we've basically contracted all that from wellhead to burner tip. That's inside the power plant uh, through that pipeline. So no upgrades to the pipeline. They may have some valves in between us and, say, Colorado that needs to be upgraded, but that's just part of their brain damage that they have to worry about. Um, on connectivity. Provo has really good connectivity. In fact, you have some of the best, and it makes it why people want to be here. You have a lot of things that you've invested in as a city that makes data centers want to be here. Does it mean Provo wants them to be here? I don't know, but you have great connectivity. So generally speaking, you fit some of those really important boxes for um, data centers to point their their sights towards a city. You have really good people. You have a close campuses to universities. Um, there's a really good employment base here. It's a cool town. You got an airport. That's another big one. They want to be close to an airport. Um, so I don't know. There's just a lot of positives, but doesn't always mean cities agree with the same things. So did I answer those questions?
Yes, yeah, that was the others. That did help. Thank you.
Yeah.
I got a quick question. Um, I know that it's been difficult for data centers to find cities to take them on. And I wondered how many different cities you've spoken to about getting this data center built.
Yeah, that's not a great question. I'm going to take a big breath. It's kind of a, I'll try to make it a short answer. I am one of thousands of people beating down the doors of cities, asking for power. They kind of ask about water, but it's really about power, electricity. And we just asked the question, since there is not enough power and most cities you go in, they would say, similar to say what Tad said, we would love to sell you this much uh, electricity because it would mean so much revenue. That's a wonderful paradigm if you had the infrastructure to do it. Um, if there was an infrastructure problem just for Provo, we would solve that. But it's not a Provo issue. It's a grid issue. We're talking way beyond Provo. We're talking Rocky Mountain Power Level, Pacific Corp, and beyond. It's just a big problem. So um, every city says the same exact thing that Provo says, just, you know, we don't have the power. We don't have the water. That's generally what they tell you. So all we did is said, fine. Uh, data centers aren't going away and their demand isn't going away. So what are we going to do to change that? We said, let's do a self-serve island power plant. Still has some variables to work out there, worthy to talk about. And then let's design a system that doesn't evaporate the water, like almost all data centers have done forever. And let's just absorb the heat instead of evaporate the heat. So I don't know if I answered your question, but I've talked to a lot of cities. Um, most of the data centers want to be here, and so we just keep coming back. And I don't know if Provo likes that, but that's what happens.
So that's my follow up. Why why build it inside the city? Just like out of curiosity, obviously, it's easier for people who service the data center. I get that part. But why not something a little more remote, which might be easier for you guys to get implemented, right?
Yeah, okay, so data centers have strange, it's not strange, but it they're very picky. They have to spend a lot of money to do these, and one of those things is on their people. These people are fairly high paid people, like maybe a hundred grand, two hundred grand a pop, right? And uh, they don't want to go far away. They don't want to have to drive an hour and a half away just to get to their job. They can kind of work wherever they want, and so they have a workforce that is limited. So they have a couple of rules. One, um, they want to be close to an airport, so they don't want to go too far away. It's ba- basically about, you know, twenty to forty minutes away from an airport, being right next door to one is a plus. Um, and they and their workforce wants to be in a town that they can enjoy. They want to live and be a part of a community that they resonate with. So if you stick them far away, which is a ti- a typical power plant paradigm, um, you find yourself with a new problem, which is transmission. There isn't really transmission capacity, not in this area anyway, big enough for this much power. And a hundred megawatts, while it's a lot, they would much rather have a gigawatt. I mean, they would they would much rather have a lot, lot more. So there are people out there trying to develop far away. They're trying. It's getting hard to get the data centers to want to show up, even though they have potential electricity. It's really about marrying the two. Can you get electrons close to where people want to work and live? Yeah. Did that do it?
Part of me is like, well, you spend twenty million dollars on the land. The land, that's a lot of salary. I at some point, people will just commute if they get paid enough.
You would think. It's not about that. You could pay them more and they'll just go work somewhere else. They would. They just don't. Think about the the generation around us who are that growing industry. They can go wherever they want, and they're not so much worried about dollars. They want dollars, but they want lifestyle. So if you say, I'll send you to Timbuktu, no offense to that location, um, just doesn't cut it. And I wish I I've I've tried to break that so many times. It's that just you just go somewhere else. You'll probably be welcomed. And they just go, we want to be somewhere where there's connectivity, like one one hundredth of a millisecond, right? I mean, it's super fast here, like crazy fast, which is super awesome. And they want to be somewhere that's next to an airport and then by people. So all those combined, the further you get away, the it almost kills the conversation every time.
And you think the main reason why cities reject the data centers is because of the power?
I'm going to say they don't reject them. They just don't have electricity. So they would take them in two seconds if they liked what they were getting, right? I'm not saying they're going to take them carte blanche, but like Eagle Mountain, they're taking them all, but guess what? They're losing them right now because they don't have electricity. So they lost Google and they lost QTS, two, one of the two biggest data center companies in the world. And they they left because Rocky Mountain Power said, we can't give you electrons, even though they thought they could. I don't know if you know about that, but so I I promise every city generally would take a data center as long as it didn't take all their water, which, you know, we're saying that's possible. And if you don't consume all their electricity and a self-serve power plant potentially is a solution to that, that's our solution. Otherwise, you're fighting a system that just doesn't have the resources in it. And so you have to go outside that system, which is that tricky thing of how do you marry those two together? And you talked about what other cities have dealt with this, or how do how do you deal with this? It's kind of a new horizon that we're dealing with, and we're we're probably one of the first to try to do it.
Okay, my last question is maybe for your friends you brought. But you talked about water topping up water. I are sorry, you just spoke about water in a closed system, but I'm like, eventually you've got to top up the car. So what is top up? Like, data centers, my understanding is a lot of water, so.
Yeah, it's not a little bit of water, right?
So tell me what the initial water outlet is and then what the top up looks like.
Do your best.
Like yearly, how much, monthly?
Okay. I'm Bob Patty. Uh, I uh, am a registered professional engineer in the state of California. Civil, uh, hold a PhD. Uh, let me tell you a little bit about resorbers. Uh, th- this was invented about twenty years ago. And uh, what they do is they capture, we ca- we capture the waste heat. And we do it from both the the power plant and from the IT equipment. That heats water. The water is in a closed loop circulating system. That water, hot water, hundred ninety degrees, sometimes a little hotter than that, will go through resorbers. There's about thirty of them. These weigh about fifty tons apiece. And they take that hot water and actually uh, chill in a separate stream of water and glycol combination. And so that 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 heat is turned into chilled water. Again, in a closed loop, that chilled water is taken into the the data center and and goes through uh, uh, heat transfer devices that enables it to cool the IT equipment and the environment. As well as cool the equipment in the power plant itself.
Give them context to the volume of water work that you have to fill the system with.
Oh, uh, you, you, you're talking several thousand gallons of water to do that. But it doesn't evaporate. I mean, it's a- any more than you would get out of your radiator in your car. Very similar kind of system, but it's a chemical reaction that's taking place in the resorbers. In order to change heat to cooling. A very effective system that government is extremely excited about it, all kinds of tax credits and. And so forth associated with doing that because you're not wasting heat. And we're talking a hundred megawatts of wasted energy. That now is converted into cooling, so we don't have to produce more power to actually run uh, chillers in order to cool it.
If only you could eat our houses with it.
Well, you know, that's a, that is a possibility. To use excess chilled water to i- in the community. And to set up a system that, that does that. We intend to do that on larger po- power plants. On this one, probably not.
What other municipalities have you done this closed-loop system in?
Excuse me?
What other municipalities have you done this system in?
This isn't, this isn't, uh, there's only one system in Utah that has done this and it's in West Jordan. Okay, this is not a normal approach.
What, what about outside of Utah?
Uh, most of these absorbers are on what type of equipment? I don't know of how often they're on data centers. More, most of the time they're evaporating off their water, like ninety-nine percent of data centers evaporate their heat.
There, any source of waste heat can be used in a resorber. So it's not just the power plants that do this. Steel plants and, you know, uh, cement plants, a- any kind of uh, of a process that uses waste. Companies have built fifty thousand of these. They're used all over the country, all over the world. And so it's not a new technology, but it's one that's very well-developed and, and one that can be used on power plants. We think we're a bit innovative in, in using it on island power plants. We think it's a tremendous waste that Rocky Mountain Power and others don't, you know, i- i- uh, expend that heat to the atmosphere. Uh, instead of conserving it, so that they don't have to re-produce more.
Maybe, maybe uh, give you one more data point. Uh, typical data centers have a thing called a PUE. Where they have a one point six five, which means about thirty-five percent of their energy is used to cool the building, okay? That means all that elec- all those, that one hundred megawatts, thirty-five megawatts would be used just to cool the building. When you do absorbers, you get up to like, you know, one point oh six, which means only about six megawatts are used to cool. Which means you're using more electricity to actually run the IT equipment and whatnot. I don't know if that helps you, but that's what happens when you do this.
It, it's both cost-effective and it's environmentally friendly.
Well. What, what type of um, metric tons of CO2 would you expect to be released?
That is a question, Chris? Yeah, I, I think I'll.
Say your name.
Brian Men, excuse me, I'm Brian Mensinger. I'm with Trinity Consultants. Um, that is a good question. I don't have that off the top of my head, the uh, CO2 metric tons. Um, I can tell you that. These data centers, having permitted them myself and. And some of the water issues that you're talking about have been successfully implemented. For more than six years in the state of Utah. Um, but I could definitely look the number up for the CO2E for you. Uh, like I said, I don't have it mentally off the top of my head. So what?
Does, does point four, point five metric tons per kilowatt hour, does that sound about, or megawatt, does that? Sound about right?
Yeah, I wouldn't want, I would not want to guess. I mean, most of what we are more concerned about, although it's, it's a very. Important concern with CO2E is making sure that. These power plants and data centers meet the ambient air quality standards, which is structured around the Clean Air Act. Right? And implementing the Clean Air Act. Though it is, it is something from a sustainability standpoint. Every data center company that I've ever worked with has a data, there's a sustainability goals and achieving and reducing. Their carbon footprint as well. Um, which is frankly why. You know, from a permitting standpoint, because this is continually a shrinking uh. Emission profile, that it's, it's not as much of a concern from a Clean Air Act standpoint. Again, an important concern, but. It's a continually ratcheting down scenario.
Okay. Do you know about how many metric tons of CO2 per year you'd release?
Yeah, I'd, yeah, I would have to look it up for you, for the CO2.
Commissioner Jensen?
Um, the engineer mentioned uh, glycol was what was used for the cooling. Is that something that is also circulating constantly through it, or does it disappear? Like, is there a waste product that's coming off of the chemicals that are used for the cooling?
There are not waste products. Uh, it's a water thirty-seven percent glycol solution. It's the antifreeze, basically. And so, no, it's not coming out of the system. That's all a sealed and recirculating system of, of water.
So if I were to imagine something in my terms, would it be like the freon of an air conditioning system? That you only occasionally have to recharge because it. Keeps getting reused or like, how is it that you don't have to add more and you don't lose any if it's continuously being used?
Occasionally you'll add some to top it off, like you do to your, you know, on an annual basis to your, your uh. Uh. To your, your automobile. I mean, it's about that level. These are engines. These are, are motors, if you will. Reciprocating engines like your automobile. And so the costs are the, the amount that you add i- is minimal. I mean, it's a few hundred, perhaps a thousand gallons a year. That you would top thirty, forty gen- generators off with. So it's not very much at all.
Okay, I just am worried about any sort of chemical. Um. Outpouring with the, the most sensitive, some of the most sensitive lands in Provo and we don't want to permit something in that area that would contaminate it. Whether with the temperature of water or with a chemical substance.
All the emissions from the plant are to be held within EPA standards from any source whatsoever. M- most of it comes from the emissions of the plant. The rest of the systems are closed. I mean, it has to. I mean, it has to get through a steel pipe in order to get out. Is there some? You know, that comes out, yes, a little bit here and there, but n- not any significant amount that would make it. Uh, a hazardous concern.
Thank you.
Commissioner K. I have three questions. Is there any of a geothermal component to this where some of the heat gets expelled into the ground? As it goes through the pipes?
Uh, 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 right now, there's not plan for this uh, plant. Primarily because the U, uh, the federal government is in the way of getting permits to do that. And so uh, there's a possibility that that could, could occur at some time in the future. But at this point, uh, it, it's seven years to get a permit. And so it's just ridiculous. Nobody's gonna invest in something that mi- might happen seven years from now. So yes, that's a potential. We are doing considerable research to identify the economics associated with it. And the Utah State is trying to get primacy from the federal government, from EPA. To be able to enable that to occur in ten months instead of seven years. But that's out of our control.
And if that were to happen, it would just reduce the amount of power it takes you for cooling and everything, right? Because you use the ambient temperature of the ground.
It would i- increase the amount of power of electrons available. Uh, you could again use a closed system so that you're not, you know, you're not consuming water. But yeah, the closed system would use the emissions from the plant to actually drive the geothermal process.
Okay. Uh, the second question is, you mentioned in the attachment to twelve hundred to eighteen hundred jobs, how many of those would be remote? In a data center like this, how many people work remotely and how many people actually come to work every day?
Yeah, it's a good question. Um, these data centers have usually one or two, maybe three scenarios. One would be one company would be the only one using it like a meta, a Google, right? And then you have the other side that's more common, which is co-location, which means ESPNs, the CNNs, the who knows whatnots have some. Computing power going on inside there. And what every one of those does is put their own employees there. And so it drives up your total employees, which is good for the city. It has a lot of jobs. When it comes to actually remote, a lot of these have to be onsite, but about, about maybe. As I've looked at their profile of how many are remote, again, it depends on the employer. Um, it seems like there's like a fifteen to twenty percent chance that some of them will be remote. Or sorry, fifteen to twenty percent of them could be remote. And those are usually people that are not necessarily IT. They could be salespeople. They could be managers that don't necessarily have to go and touch equipment, so.
Okay, the other question I had is, um, you mentioned that you wanna get started and that's why. Uh, having a self-serve power plant would be important, but what about in the future? Because obviously it would benefit the city to sell you power. What about in the future, coming up with an agreement to hybridize that somehow so that the city benefits from providing power as well?
I would believe every data center would happily pay for as much electrons as it could get. So, right now, because we're trying to say it's an island and there's again a debate on how that's managed. Um, just so that the regulatory world can just allow for the project to proceed. That scenario that you just discussed would probably be the most welcomed thing in the world. The problem is they just, nobody has any. And it's just, but I imagine it will change, right? Someday, Provo will say, we got a hundred megawatts. Will you take it? I bet they'll take it, but I bet there's a hundred other data centers that will beg for those same electrons somewhere else. So it'll be a pretty awesome place for Provo.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Can I?
I answered the question that I couldn't.
The, do you have an answer now to, to the, the?
Yeah, please, please come forward.
First of all, I apologize for not having it off the top of my head, but just looking this up and this is actually permitted. Uh, little over nine hundred thousand uh, tons of, of COT. We're not talking a lot, a lot here. Again, the emission profiles that. Because the way we're regulated here in Utah, I think most of you are, are familiar with the inversions. Uh, and the wire is getting better, generally speaking. Uh, it's forcing these data centers to in- install technology that's frankly cutting edge. And this is the world I live in. You know, I work with data centers in Utah as well as across the country. And this, the technology is just driving and that's the way the Clean Air Act is. Bob mentioned about the best technology. In the state of Utah, it is part of our, our code. Since the early two thousands to install best available control technology. Every air permit application has to compare with every like type of equipment. Like what is out there, what technology is out there. So you can't just go, well, I'll install something less, right? You have to install comparable to what other people are installing. So this industry is a, is actually installing some of the best technology out there. For lowest emission, far less than the power plants you're used to, you're used to seeing.
I, I may, I probably have been stretching this analogy. I apologize, but it, it might help. Imagine just a regular car driving down the road. They have their emission standards. The state currently gives them uh, air per, or uh, uh, emissions, you know, uh, uh, sticker. So apparently they meet the EPA standard, right? Then you go to like a Prius. Well, do they have emissions? Little bit. And that's what these are like. It's not that we, a little bit is still a lot of it because it's a hundred megawatts. But in terms of efficiency, we're talking about a very dramatic shift of what you would normally deal with. And that's why we were able to get, one of the questions that was asked, how do we get an air permit? We've already modeled it. We've already done the preliminary work that we know that if we continue, we will get a permit. Now, that could change. Uh, U A, UMPA is a major source because they're so big. And as an island power, we potentially, if we can somehow segregate that ownership. We're not a major source and because of that, we get a interesting benefit, which is we have an easier time getting an air permit than say a big or a major source. And, and if this is the standard we have to meet as a minor source, we're below it in terms of our technology. I mean, we're even better than what the EPA. The EPA says, this is how you have to get here. Most people are above it. They emit too much. They can't get permitted. So we have to be to their, their, their minimum and we exceeded that potential. So I don't know if that changes.
No, well, I'm curious because I, I think you said like eight or nine hundred thousand metric tons per year. Uh, that's the equivalent of about a hundred and forty to a hundred and eighty thousand cars. On the road, gas-powered cars, right?
Or CO2.
Right.
Yeah, for CO2.
Our emissions are far lower when it comes to all of the other rules that we actually bring.
Yeah, and tell me about some of the other uh. Emissions that are involved with natural gas.
Natural gas here, you would have the, the priority would be frankly on NO2 or NOx emissions. As well as VOCs, and these are the technologies that we're employing to minimize those emissions.
And sulfur dioxide?
Very small because gas, natural gas these days, way upstream, what John was talking about. Was that, is actually has to be ultra-low sulfur. So they remove that way upstream. It, what you burn in your house, what, right? What, everything is low sulfur these days. It's like I said, all that gets removed way upstream.
How about like uh, PM-ten, other particulate matter?
There is gonna be some PM-ten, right? But with natural gas, it's not like. Using diesel or coal or anything like that. It's very small amounts. So. There, it's very negligible actually, the PM-ten. Where what we prioritize frankly, and what the state prioritizes is, is at the NO2. Right? And that's, that's what the concern to prevent the inversion to. Right? In order to, you know, make sure this air stays clean.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, yeah, well, I'm not done yet. Um, just with the, the water usage, um. I, I can't remember if you said it was just thousands of gallons per year or, or how, was it, what, what's the range of that? Thousands, ten thousands, hundreds of thousands?
You're using about the amount of water that, uh, on the equivalent side of.
Well, I'm not asking for something like a relative number, something relative to something. I'm just asking for a straight number.
Just to make up. It's so small, it's to be negligible. Yeah, it's a few hundred gallons, maybe a thousand gallons a year. For the whole blooming, you know, power plant itself. I mean, you're gonna use more in toilets and water drinking fountains and.
So just below ten thousand a year?
Yeah, way below. I mean, it, it, nobody really quantifies that well because it, it's so small that. It's completely negligible.
If I could, if I, if I could say something, we're, we're comparing this to acre feet of water. And the city would be worried about the acre feet of water we might consume. That would be a typical thing on a, a data center. We're not even getting to an acre foot yet. So when the city thinks about their water resources, a data center normally consumes a ton, like it's so much water. That's because they evaporate it. And they generate a lot of heat, which means a lot of water. So it reverses that whole thing. It's now just a teeny-tight amount of water and it's mainly for like outdoor use, drinking fountains, clothes. So it's kind of a cool paradigm shift, anyway.
The pipeline you have there could deliver all the water we need in probably fifteen minutes a year. That you already have on the site.
Any others?
Uh, nah.
Okay, Commissioner Shen?
Thank you. Yeah, one thought, I'm just, I'm just curious, trying to understand the, you know, the, all the. And I appreciate you taking the time to help us get our heads around this. Um, is, is there a reason, would there be an opportunity to look at better like renewable? Uh, energy sources for this kind of data center as opposed to like a, a natural gas burning power plant? Is that even within the rate, like the realm of possibility to uh, supply the power that you would need for this kind of data set? Like things like solar or other kinds of, you know, less lower emissions kinds of things?
N- no, it's not feasible for a data center. Uh, i- i- I mean, if, if you were to, to use uh, solar or wind. It's only available when the sun is shining and when the wind is blowing, okay? And it degrades every other form of power that's generated. The only reason that we do it in this country is because we're forced to do it by the federal government. So every bit of investment that you would require in order to have a firm power capacity of a hundred megawatts. You're going to have to provide anyway, even if you have some solar, you know, power capacity. Because you can't depend on it.
Can I, can I add something there to my, so basically, like Bob was saying, it's a reliability issue, right? What a lot of data centers do from, when they put their sustainability plans to ratchet down the CO2E. I'm sorry, yes. So. I'm sorry, yes, so what they do is they will invest in a remote wind farm or solar farm or something to that, everybody kind of chooses their own, where available, usually in a remote location. And they take those and they buy them as credits, right? So they offsets what they're generating.
It's to look good.
So. The, the, the more politically correct answer is, they, they for sure will be investing on that, on site, it's a little harder, just because there's not a ton of real estate. They most certainly will probably be putting solar on the roof. Most of our equipment doesn't go on the roof, and so there's space there, so they'll probably do things like that, it's probably not going to be a huge difference, but they'll do it, because it's good. And then, I think any of those more progressive ideas like SMRs, I don't know if anybody wants those, but those are zero emissions effectively, those are small modular reactors. And unfortunately, they're just on a permitting scale that's just a bit, well, it's too long right now, and so, anyway, that answers that.
But we are pursuing renewables in the geothermal. And we're doing it actively, and you know, we're doing it at a level that is only constrained presently by EPA and the federal government issuing permits to actually drill the wells. That's the challenge, and that's reliable and consistent and economic.
Yeah, that, that makes sense, I understand what you're saying about the, the, the peak demands and, yeah, needing power twenty-four seven, so thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Can I say one last thing?
Yeah, one last thing. Okay, thank you again, we appreciate you being willing to listen to us, hopefully that wasn't too much of a mind bend. We, this was started with this idea that was said, that this is a zero emissions pipeline, we, I don't, I don't think we said that, someone said it in a report. We are not claiming it's a zero emissions, but we are saying we are meeting or exceeding the standards that the EPA, which may not be good enough, Provo may require even better than that. So we're grateful for the time you've spent with us, and thank you for asking questions. Thank you. Okay, we will now open for public comment. If there are any neighborhood district chairs present, they will have three minutes to comment, we'll invite them first. I do not see any, so we'll now open it to the general public, you'll have two minutes to comment, when your time is up, you'll hear a ding and the microphone will be muted. Each person may take one comment, if we have questions, we'll invite you to come forward at the end. Do we have anyone that would like to comment on this item? Okay, not seeing any, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the commission for discussion. Commissioner Jensen?
My biggest thing is whether it's a good idea to allow this type of non-airport related use in a zone that would benefit from airport specific uses. I looked at it on the zone map, and there's really not very much of it, but if all of the agriculture eventually gets absorbed into an AI. This is a, a large one, we've talked a lot about building our airport uses so that they collaborate with our airport instead of detract from it. I think this is an awesome idea, and I know that data centers like to, to be kind of on their own. They also make nice quiet neighbors, so it's not gonna, I don't think it'll be a detriment to the area, I just see it as like maybe an economic loss to open up zone, the zoning to allow for power centers, data centers of any, of any kind in an A1 zone. Whether we like their EPA requirements or not, I, that's my biggest thing. We've heard a lot about what the data center is, but what comes back to me, what we're asking here is that in airport zones, we're now going to allow this use. And it can be anyone if they meet the standard, which I think in and of itself keeps it at probably only this type of a use. But do we want that right next to our airport? Is that what we have these AI zones for? For airport industrial, is that what we are envisioning with the airport industrial zone when we made the airport industrial zone? Or were we hoping to have more airport related uses? Because if this is exactly what the city was envisioning when the zone was created, then I feel like the FAA requirements, the EPA requirements, the city requirements, those will all limit the use to be something that is conducive to what we want to have in Provo. And our question to me tonight is, is this a use we want to give up space in our airport industrial zone for? So, I love, I love the presentation, I love that there's no steam release, that it's a low water use, that they, they have high EPA standards that they're meeting. They're low height, they don't want to connect to the grid, whether or not the grid allows them to not connect is not my problem. And it seems like no other kind of power plant could qualify to build here because of the airport restrictions, so only this type of one could comply. They already own the land, they've been upfront about that's why they want to do it there, because they already own it, and they want to be, have room to wiggle their elbows and not have people in their face. So do we, as a planning commission, feel like airport zones are meant for something like this? Is this our vision?
So if you think economic benefit is one of the things we want, right? Fifteen hundred jobs.
Yeah, as far as economic benefit, absolutely meets a general plan overall.
That's just construction, though.
Yeah, well, no.
Right, but airports would also come with jobs, it's not fifteen hundred or nothing, right, it's fifteen hundred or whatever else.
Right, or car rental facilities, or hotels, or restaurants, or.
But it wouldn't be that concentration of jobs.
It wouldn't.
That's a high concentration of jobs in and not.
And I totally agree, that in and of itself, I love this use and I want it. But are we giving up something else that could only be in an airport zone if we allow, if we open up for more uses?
Like, could this be in the Mountain Vista industrial park?
Right. Where there's no other competition for other uses, but still has access to everything except for property that they own.
Yeah, I, I also am a little concerned about, I mean, it seems like, we've talked about a little bit about kind of the speculative problems that come with this kind of thing where will airport uses be priced out if data centers are allowed? Will, you know what I mean, like, will, I, I feel like it's just gonna, it's, there's also a cost in that sense, like, for all of that, I guess, development, it's, there's a big cost as well.
Commissioner Shin?
Yeah, I think if I can, like, kind of try to read the, what we're feeling here. It, it seems like some of the, maybe the concern or the uncertainty is coming from the fact that we just don't have, we don't have any examples to look at for what this looks like in Provo, right? Like, we're talking a new, a new kind of land use, a new kind of, like, new technologies, as you were discussing, that we really don't have a great, like, we, we know about apartments, we know about parking lots, but we don't really know about what a power plant and a data center looks like in Provo, and what the, you know, to kind of mentally compare, which I think is why we're trying to ask these questions and understand. My, my thought is, it seems like there's kind of, there's two maybe aspects that we're, we're trying to drill down to here. One is just the land use from a pure zoning perspective, right? Which I think that's not too far off from, like, you know, this is industrial, an industrial use, right? It would be a warehouse, we know what a warehouse is, it would employ people, you know, we, we can understand that that's, that's a boon to have employment, and we can kind of get our heads around what that looks like. It, my, my, my feeling is that maybe our concern is about the kind of unknowns, about like environmental impact and things like that. That we, we're not so sure kind of what that might look like. And also like with the airport, the concerns about, you know, emissions plumes for visibility for airplanes, and it sounds like that might, that should be not too big of a concern. I guess, it seems like there's, there, there's stuff that goes beyond just like the zoning concerns and like, is, is a warehouse belong here? And goes into these like, you know, environmental, kind of larger picture, environmental and like the air, the airspace issues, right? So like, I, my assumption, like kind of where my head is at, is I feel like there's probably regulations and, and standards already set by the city and state that like, you know, if there was going to be some issue with the airport where it's like creating an unsafe situation, or if there was going to be some significant environment, environmental impact, like those would be addressed by probably existing stuff at the state level. But I don't know enough to know, like, for sure, if that's something that we need to like drill down, be like, hey, do we really want to like understand this better just for ourselves on top of what's already being required? Like, does that kind of, is that kind of sound about right, what you guys are feeling?
Yeah, I, I wanted to say also, like, I don't know that, I know they presented about the EPA, but how long more will the EPA exist, like? And, I don't know, I'm, I'm not I'm not inclined to trust companies per se to do the right thing by the citizens that live here, you know? So, that makes me nervous, and so, because we're not just a, the regulatory world, we actually live in Provo. And our kids go to school here and stuff, so, yeah, I don't, I don't love that.
So, if I can just comment a little bit here, first of all, the staff recommendation does indicate that we should put a condition that the emissions and water issues are signed off by the public works, et cetera, and I agree, I think there's a lot of regulations there. As far as airport uses, it's an interesting zone, because I think there's actually, there almost should be two different zones there. Because depending where you are in relation to the airport, I think dictates what kind of thing we're looking for there. There are areas perhaps down closer to the terminal, et cetera, that we're interested in, you know, hotels and restaurants and that kind of stuff. But up at the north end, I don't know where this property is, but up at the north end, it's kind of separated, and in that place, to me, it looks more like we want airport compatible industrial, meaning things that aren't too tall, for example, don't have smokestacks, don't make the scene. Things like that, that aren't going to interfere with the airport, but it's not as important to be directly airport related, and there's a lot of acreage up in that area. Personally, I mean, as someone who works in the technology world, data centers are not going anywhere, we need them, we need more of them, they're becoming an essential part of our economy. And they provide, you know, high skill, high paying jobs that are stable and, and a good boost for, you know, students that graduate from BYU, et cetera, to be able to stay locally. I was talking to someone over the weekend who is working with a trunk company, trying to put in electrical charging stations along interstates. And they run into the same issues with power, where they'll go to a city and the city says, we really want you, but we just can't service it. So I think their solution that they've created is very intriguing to me, that they've addressed issues with water usage, with electrical usage. Yeah, it's a lot of CO2 emission, but I think, because I don't think data centers are going anywhere, I think that emission is happening somewhere, and somewhere else, it's probably coal that's doing it. And so, you know, that emission's going to happen regardless, it just dictates where, and I'm less concerned about that. Natural gas is a fairly clean source, where I grew up in California, there was a garlic factory nearby that had its own power station, I got to tour it as about, as a boy scout. You know, these larger industrial areas actually do this, I believe the one in Vineyard used to be one for Geneva Steel back in the day, or at least built out of one, that was that. And so this was a solution that people used a lot, and I think it's an interesting, very intriguing solution for data centers as well, which are kind of this day and age's big power user, right? So I think there's a lot of interesting things, and I guess for me, the idea is intriguing enough. The fact that, you know, I actually think there's going to be a halo effect around data centers and might bring more tech out into that area. We've actually had several people come and request zone changes, et cetera, for industrial, none of them actually dictated that it would specifically be airport related. Right, just kind of compatible with the airport as far as low buildings, et cetera. So I think it fits out there, and I think it might actually help draw tech out there, which I think would be awesome around the airport as well. And so I'm comfortable relying on the regulations we have, the fact that the EPA, at least for now, still exists to help mitigate some of those other concerns that might rise. So, other comments?
I, I would agree with you, and I think that the solutions that they've come up with are right. Yeah, and reduces the problems that have been existing. And the fact that they're interested in the geothermal, which really is a very clean renewable energy source, I think that's awesome. And I like that they're willing to let the city benefit from it by selling them the power, like that, that would be someday that we could support that, so. I think it's a great thing. I, I would want to know, how many acres are in the AI zone right now?
Thirty.
Total?
Thirty are zoned that way right now.
Uh huh, and, and how many acres would they be using?
How big is your property?
It's all of it?
No, so.
No, it can't be.
It's already zone changed, on the future land use map, though, how much is designated for airport?
I don't know on the future land use, land use map.
It's got to be thousands and thousands, right?
It's large, right?
Right now, there's three little pieces of AI, and they are immediately north of the entrance to the commercial airport. And that section where Lakeview Parkway curves, and then, oh, and then up along, I think next to that place that has all the signs at it, just east of that.
Okay.
I think it's more in the hundreds than the thousands.
Okay.
Hundreds of acres, is that?
Yeah, hundreds as opposed to thousands, yes.
Okay, well, I, I think there's plenty of room, but just, I, I agree with that idea that we don't want it right next to a place where we want hotels and restaurants and things that actually immediately support the airport, so.
I think it's all, one thought that came to mind is also, we are talking, and I have to see a zone map to kind of refresh my memory on this, but we are talking airport industrial, so this wouldn't be directly competing with a hotel or like a shopping center, right? Because it's industrial, not commercial, so the, you know, the, the, the alternative would be some other kind of warehouse or manufacturing or, you know, industrial use, right? It's funny, we call it the, the AI zone, maybe we'll get some AI in the AI zone after all or something. Yeah, it does, it is interesting that like, I mean, you know, we're talking about things that don't consume, like, one of the big concerns going around data centers these days, obviously, is like water and these kinds of things. And if we're talking about a closed system that doesn't actually, you know, use water, I mean, you know, that's, that, that's a lot better than, than the alternative would be, right? And, yeah, I, I think that, like, my kind of, as we've been talking about this, like crunching the numbers, it, it sounds like we're, 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 you know, we're very attentive to issues about air quality here in Utah, right? We want to make sure air quality is good, because we get these inversions and the, you know, the, the, the traffic and stuff. The, the, from what I'm understanding, the CO2 emissions would be significant for our city. But I, as I understand it, that's less directly impacts like air quality in terms of like the inversion, that kind of stuff, like that, that's caused by particulate matter from exhaust in cars and that kind of stuff. It's less caused by overall like CO2 emissions, which, you know, would be a lot, but as was discussed, right? It's, it's here with natural gas, or it's somewhere else with coal or whatever. So there's, you know, the, the bigger picture, are we concerned about like overall being a part of, you know, creating a bigger problem? It might not, you know, it, it might not be such a, the worst case, right?
Yeah, my understanding might be incorrect here, but I tend to think of emissions as two categories, your local effect emissions, which are your particulate matter, and then your global effect emissions like CO2, right? That's, doesn't matter where it's emitted, as long as it's emitted, it's going to have a negative impact. And so, for me, natural gas is about as clean as you can get as far as particulate matter gets, et cetera, short of renewables, right? But it does emit the CO2 still, but again, I think that power's going to happen somewhere, and so that CO2 is going to get emitted somewhere. And actually, having it on site, you don't have transmission losses and things like that involved.
I, can we ask the city staff to verify that their understanding of AI zone uses that were anticipated versus A uses that were anticipated, just so, so we don't reason it away if it's actually incorrect? Ms. Robison, or Mr. Ardmore, or Mr. Pepperoni?
So you're saying the ones that, what's allowed in them?
When the AI zone was created and the A zone, airport zone was created, what were the anticipated uses?
I wasn't around when the actual zone was created, so I'm just looking at some of these uses that show, so at the top you have an A, which would be airport, and then the AI, airport industrial.
So AI is for the hotels, but A is for like car rentals?
It's the other way around, so like if you look at airport and related activities, under A, it's permitted.
Not for hotels?
Oh, sorry, but I was looking at.
Car rental is, is airport, but not hotels.
Yeah, you're right, hotels.
But restaurants are allowed in either one.
Yeah.
Ms. Jensen, I think maybe that your question is best answered by the purpose and objectives of the zone. So, and the airport. So in the airport industrial zone, it says this is established to provide. A range of uses that are compatible with the Provo Municipal Airport and encourage usage of the airport. The uses allowed in this zone are intended to not impact the surrounding residential areas as to noise, traffic, aesthetics. Are being taken into consideration, the zone is only applicable to areas surrounded by the Pro- Provo Municipal Airport. So that's the purpose and objective of the airport industrial zone.
Okay, so it is more of a complimentary to the airport use.
That's what this suggests.
Though. We have said that having a business close to an airport is also a complimentary use if. If that helps.
It can be.
It just doesn't help. It helps some of the users of the airport who are flying into that particular location, but it doesn't. It doesn't provide amenities for the airport.
Right, and where I think this one does excel is it talks about not disturbing the neighborhoods around and. Kind of creating that buffer, it does that very well, what it doesn't do is utilize the airport, right? I mean, honestly, right now, though, I think we're somewhat limited out there. Completely off topic, but one of my dreams is if we can get, you know, a FedEx or UPS to go do a through the fence. Place there, then suddenly we're going to get lots of people that want to be out there, right? Um because they can ship out of there, but we don't have that um. So right now, we're just approving warehouses and light industrial places that are just generic. Right, they're not airport specific.
I have a couple of concerns, um first, I I just want to agree with Commissioner Jensen on. Compatibility with airport uses, um I echo a lot of the same, your initial statements on that. Uh second, um. I'm deeply skeptical of the claims of the amount of water used. So I I was looking at some. Um some potential data and and the in Salt Lake, there's a lot of data centers, not a lot, but there's 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 some. The the newest one or the the one using the most recent. Technology is the Nova Data Center in West Jordan, and they use that closed recirculating pipes with refrigerant. Now, they used in in twenty twenty-two. It's a thirty megawatt um. Uh facility and and they use. They had one month in July where they used five hundred eighty-five thousand gallons of water. And and from January to July, they had already used like one point one million gallons of water, so I'm kind of, I I when I'm. I maybe this is apples and oranges and unfair comparison, but that's supposed to be the latest and greatest. With data center water usage and so I'm like deeply skeptical of only thousands being used. And now relative to some of the other data centers, yeah, it was a fraction, this this Nova Center in West Jordan, it's a. You know, it's an eighth, a tenth of some of the other data centers being used. But it's still a ton, and then second, just the with the. The natural gas emissions, I'm uh deeply. Skeptical of um. In the state of Utah, the ability for the. The continued political will to enforce EPA standards in Utah, because mostly on account of the state legislature legislators. Seeking all kinds of exemptions from EPA regulations and of. And we live in one of the most polluted city like urban areas, and we're like on the same. Category as Tokyo and Mexico City and New Delhi. And if anyone's ever seen the reports or spent any time in any of those cities, I've spent time in two of the three. Um it's nasty and it affects, you know, you see it in in asthma cases and. Different, you know, different health problems in the community, so I'm like. I'm just, I don't know, like in terms of the planning commission, looking at. Uh uh changing ordinance to. To, you know, benefit the community and businesses and stuff, I'm all for that. Um but like I see one of our duties is to uh health, safety, welfare of the community and. Like I'm deeply skeptical skeptical of uh us maintaining quality of life in terms of. Uh water and. And pollution.
What were the that, sorry, that number again, for you said the, like, was it like the annual usage at the the Nova Center in West Jordan?
It was in a news report and a. One of the papers of record and it said, uh, yeah, it was five hundred eighty-five thousand gallons in the month of July twenty twenty-two.
Would anyone like to hear a response if, would you like to respond to that, can we ask them? I'd like to hear your response to that, that was in the Salt Lake Tribune, those numbers.
Yeah, your numbers are accurate when you don't absorb the energy, they're using. Evaporative cooling, just like a swamp cooler?
No, no, that that data center was using closed system, recirculated, refrigerated.
I would, I would just argue there's no way.
It's incompatible. You're either losing the the moisture because you're using it for evacuation or you're not.
No, no, the one, the evaporative ones were using six point nine million, eight million per per month, like this, so this is.
Okay, well, maybe they've got a mix over there, maybe they're using some evaporative coolers. And and some that are absorption coolers. I don't know, I mean, they they keep it very uh tight to the to the chest as to what they're actually doing, but we're using all of our cooling. Is with resorption coolers.
And and maybe, maybe you can share those those details with staff and maybe forward them on to us and give a response. The 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 way I, the reason we're like hard to believe what you're saying, sorry. If you had that kind of water moving out of a closed system, it'd be like your car dumping water out and you would see it. And it's so hot that it makes steam, you would see steam as well, so you know, you see a car broken down on the side of the road and steam is coming out, it's because their radiator broke. Or their radiator ho- radiator hose is broke, and so you would have a problem, and so, while I don't necessarily want to debate. That dat- data versus maybe what we're claiming. We're just saying you have to fill up the system and it's not hundreds of thousands of gallons, the pipes aren't that big, these are small. They're they're using, you know, a different process to move heat, so anyway, maybe maybe we can do a cool treaties of some kind to. Give further detail on how we back up our total gallons.
We have all of the engineering we can share with you to to show you how the system works, the heat. Uh balance, all of the the data that would normally drive. The understanding of how much water use is being done.
Yeah, no, and that's why I was asking for comparisons to like whether what other municipalities and facilities you you you're talking about or worked in. You mentioned West Jordan, so I brought up the lowest emitting place in West Jordan, Nova, um and I'm not a scientist, I'm. I'm I'm an attorney, I I read and I I research and I analyze, uh. All the science stuff is completely out of my wheelhouse and uh um. But but yeah, I so I'm, there's a part of me that's just skeptical.
We can, you know, we can write in the contract what, you know, you see we're going to have.
And and I think that's a valid valid point. If we show up, tell you that we're only going to use thousand, a few thousand gallons and then come in and say we need five hundred thousand or a million gallons. I promise you, as we submit those documents to the city in the planning stage or through the construction phase. It's going to get rejected in two seconds, because we already know the city's not okay with that, anyway, so I think it's a great point.
Yeah, no, I mean, we're a deliberatory bar body and advisory body body, and so I. I bring those issues up so we could uh consider them and pass them along.
One other thing, because we are extracting the water from the emission stream. We're actually producing more water than we're consuming. By a considerable margin.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, do you have any like case studies, some white papers, any type of things that like publish articles that. That demonstrate these things?
Engineering uh. Data that we can share with you, you can't go to a Nova. Or to uh uh you know, any of the other data centers and find out how they do what they do. That are, everybody's under NDA, they won't even let you show up on their property. So we 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 have the engineering capacity and we can show you the data that drives the system.
Okay, the short answer is yeah.
So you're you're just, you're different than Nova, I'm, what what I made with my caveat earlier that I don't know if this is an apple and an orange comparison. You're saying we're we're different from them, we're unrelated, different proprietary technology, you're nodding yes.
That they may be using some of what we're proposing. But they're obviously not using all, you know, they're not doing all the cooling with evaporative or with uh absorption coolers, are they, wouldn't be consuming the water? Doesn't happen.
Yeah, we'll get, we'll get some data, we'll make a note of that, that's good, yeah, we'll send some data.
I think as a point of comparison, I was just trying to look up some numbers, just, and I think it's it's great that we are trying to kind of pin down like. Just to get a good understanding, right? My, what I'm seeing online is that the average, they say like the average water usage for like a single lawn is about three thousand gallons for one, like one watering. I think if that sounds about right, so just for for comparison, like a million gallons of water is about three hundred people watering their lawn once. You know, so I it's just, you know, to just to put it into perspective, I I think that. I mean, that that even if you're using like a million gallons of water a month for a single thing, you know, like we have way more than three hundred. You know, homes watering their lawn in the in in Provo and they water many times a month, not just once a month, so like. I I I'm just, I'm not trying to, you know, I'm not trying to play devil's advocate or take sides on either side, I just think it's like. It's worth noting that's that's really probably even a larger data center would use far less water than we just spray on for lawns, and that's. That's a whole different conversation about water conservation and that, that, you know, is is we're having now, but I I don't think this is. I'm not sure that the water usage alone is like substantially uh like a huge thing relative to what we already are using for other stuff.
So I think I'm seeing kind of two possibilities for the way forward, one would be to continue it for more information and data. And the other one would be to move forward with a a motion either to recommend or not. Um and if we recommend, I think we put in those, hey, these concerns about emissions and. Um water have to be worked out with public works, right, so I I see those as two ways forward, I'm curious which way looks better for you guys.
I think since we're just making a recommendation to the municipal council, we can state the things that we want to have more information about and. The municipal council has access to all of our discussion points and staff has access to it, if we um. Talk about the requirements or standards that we would expect to have happen, that gets passed along as well. And the information that they bring can go to the municipal council instead of us having to hear it again, I think we've. Beat a dead horse at this point, we we understand it, we've asked every question we possibly can ask in a in a simulation. And we just need to decide if this is something we'd be comfortable with in the zone and give it a nod or not.
Yeah, I'd love to hear emotion.
I'll make a motion.
I do have a question before we make a motion for staff, what does the recommended language need to be for an island as opposed to a data center like? If we really just want to limit it to something like this freestanding power station, or do we want to open it up to any kind of power station, how do we need to word it? Self self serve power plant, okay.
Uh one other thought, do we care about um specifying like for natural gas only as opposed to like diesel or any other kind of, you know? I I don't know if that's even viable here, but just do we want to?
I feel like the the statement here about all issues regarding emissions and low water usage be addressed and resolved with public works, I feel like. Do we trust our public works and power department to triage this appropriately, I do.
I mean, we could expand that a little bit and say specifically about fu- fuel type uses. And, you know, I mean, we could fill that in.
Fill that in more.
I I know, I trust public works.
You ready?
Ready? Okay, make a motion. That the planning commission recommend approval of the proposed text amendment to the Provo City Council. John Jensen requests approval of an ordinance text amendment to section fourteen point seventeen D point zero two zero. Permitted uses in airport zones to add data centers and self-serve power plants as permitted uses. With the following conditions, that all uses. All issues, sorry, regarding emissions and low water usage be addressed and resolved with public works and. As a planning commission, we were interested in uh the city being able to. Know how much water usage is going to be used in the contract and have sufficient utility infrastructure as well.
Discussion on the motion?
Discussion on the motion.
Um did we want to specify that the city have say in which power sources were allowed for the?
Which fuel sources?
Which fuel sources?
So with the addition of of that, that the city has a say in in which uh power sources are used.
Do we want to call it fuel sources? I'll second that.
Thank you, um Commissioner Allen, start the voting. I, I'll vote I, so if I counted that right, it was three to three, is that correct? Four to three, okay, it was four to three, yeah, I didn't count myself in the number, so four to three, it passes, um let's move to the next item. This is item two, do we want to read in two and three together, separately, together? So items two and three, Barry and Judy Finch request a zone map amendment to apply the agritourism overlay zone to eight point eight six acres of agricultural. A one point five zoned property in order to build an event center located at two thousand six hundred and one west, two hundred and eighty south. And item three, Finch Family LLC requests project plan approval for a new wedding event building. In a proposed one, a one point five agricultural tourism overlay zone located at two six oh one west, two eighty south. Aaron Ardmore is going to present.
Good, thank you, Commissioner, um so for you that have been on the commission for a while, you may have remembered past. Uh steps to get here, uh some of you might not, and I think that's telling to. To how long the Finches have waited for this day, um so we're here with the reason request for this overlay. Uh that uh could get them uh their event center on this property, so I'm just going to highlight the. Uh the main points here from the staff report that you have in front of you, uh the property is highlighted there, it's. Over eight acres, nearly nine acres of agricultural land, um they've gone through the project plan. Application rather than concept plan application that you typically see with a reason request. Uh that project plan has been reviewed and has been found to meet all the the standards that would be uh required with this, so. Uh so you could see how that would kind of lay on the land there, um this is the first instance of. Asking for this overlay in the city, um so. It will be interesting interesting to the city uh to to see how this plays out, uh the AT. Overlay was written with specific uses, there's four specific additional uses that it gives agricultural uh properties. Uh commercial tours, museums, uh educational classes and event centers. Uh and those event centers are further regulated uh by hours and noise within the overlay chapter. Um so, so we've we've tried to build a framework that that this could work um. Go here to the actual uh project, you have elevations of of every side of the barn. You've got your uh materials for the barn on the the bottom corner and then your floor plan uh on the top corner there. So it kind of gives you an idea of of what's been submitted uh to get them to this point. This has been through the neighborhood meetings a few times, uh the latest instance of that was uh met with. Mostly positivity, I think you received a an email from a district chair, Andrew Terry, indicating that uh rather. Rather than the the use being the concern, uh it's really elements of the use that came up as concerns noise and traffic. Uh which which hopefully are regulated through to the zone uh chapter that's written. Um so we are recommending approval of the project plan and the zone change. Requested in front of you, and I will try to answer any questions.
Thank you, any questions for Mr. Ardmore, Lisa?
The, on page eight of the staff report, there's two, there's a landscape plan and a. Like an overlay of a site plan, and they don't quite match up, the buildings that are shown and the bottom. Um aren't in the same place on the top one, I don't know if that matters or not, but. The bottom one gives the impression that the parking lot is quite a distance away from any buildings and the top one makes it look like it's right on top of them.
I also noticed that when I was doing the overlay, um so the the overlay of this plan on the map. That that doesn't matter for the plan, uh really what we're focused on is the driveway. New parking lot, the landscaping around the the event center and the event center itself.
Which is awesome compared to original iterations of this idea, this is fantastic.
So all the existing stuff on the property doesn't play into this request.
Okay.
Except that the event center can't be within fifty. Except that the event center can't be within fifty feet of any agricultural structure. I measured it out to what's actually on the ground and they've met that.
So even if it's right next to the parking lot, it will still meet that standard?
Right. The event center is pushed back enough from that the actual building.
Okay, my other question was on the opposite side. Um, on the overhead map, it shows there's a house to the west.
Yes.
Um, is that the Finch's home or is that somebody else's property?
No, that's someone else's property.
Because that would be my biggest concern as far as the um noise or the shadow of a giant barn or whatever. Um, what's the setback for them and is it, is there any conflict with that?
No, they've met the setbacks for for the building uh from that zone. Uh, it's agricultural zone, even though it is a residence. Uh, so there is as tight as setback transition requirements as there would be if it was like R one zone. Um, but they have met the required setbacks uh for that property owner. I know he's opposed to this, um, but it does technically meet the the requirements of the zone.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. We'll go ahead and invite the applicant to come forward. Once again, you'll have fifteen minutes for your presentation.
Let's still be short. Aaron did a great job. Judy Finch. So this is a picture of what the barn will look like. It is, um, I'll get back to that. This is kind of a picture of the the driveway. Looks like the picture got a little smushed. Aaron was a little better. And then um as per what we're required, we will have an asphalt parking lot and asphalt road up to the parking lot. And then um the pictures here are the the barn is built by legacy post and beam. And then they, it's like a kit and they'll ship it out. So we'll have beautiful exposed beams. It'll be very agricultural in theme, which was a concern at one point. And then uh this is similar, what it would look like inside with nice exposed beams, nice agricultural feel. And I think Aaron did a great job and that's all I have for you. Oh, and the concern about the house and the setbacks, the house hasn't been occupied for many, many, many years. It's empty.
Thank you. Um, do we have any questions for the applicant?
I have a question. This is just a small detail, really.
Judy, Barry, Phil, come back up.
Um, yeah, so the the living spaces of the animals are on one side and then the this event center is on the other. Are you going to like is, are you allowed to or can they bring the animals over into the lawn? Okay, that's all I wanted to know. So for events and stuff, you'd bring them over to be there and then move them back?
Correct.
So I'm Barry Finch. And as you, if you look at the landscaping, we're sitting on about three and a half acres back there. The extreme of that, all the way around will be a horse track. There will be a little petting zoo, but it's hundreds of feet away from anything, anything. Um, hundreds away from the school, hundreds away from our farm, animal buildings, hundreds of feet away from the venue itself. Uh, there'll be a little pony riding area, same kind of thing. It's on the extreme. On the other side, we'll have a pavilion eventually in a playground, again, far away from everything. So the closest property to the venue will be this kind of groomed look. So there's plenty of room to do a wedding, but the outside will be the fun part.
I have one quick, oh, sorry. I have one. I'm just curious about the construction. You mentioned the the post and beam, the the rustic kind of uh kit-built thing. Um, as you fill out the walls, are those being, are those being with like a like a structural insulated panel or like like stick frames after the fact?
This is, I don't know if you're familiar with post and beam, but this is high, high end. This is ski lodge type stuff. So this will be tongue and groove all the way from the point, which is like thirty-three feet high, all the way down on the ceiling and all the way to the floor. So it'll be tongue and groove, um, like natural looking pine on the walls. The outside will be a ship lap. So just
And yes, it will be insulated.
Okay.
Yeah, it, in fact, it even has a gap. So you have a building like this, you would think that it would be like shingles right on the other side. It has a gap for insulation. So it's
Keep the sound in the barn.
Really, really well built. Even as far as sound, we'll have think church where you have a an outside door glass with a patio or a porch and another door. Where we have this so that there are other doors, but the only door that's going to be used, if we can avoid it, will be that double enclosed door so that, you know, the band starts and you open one door, you you're still closed outside until you go out the other one. So we've tried to, I mean, we're literally hundreds of feet away from the next residents. Like hundreds of feet, if not thousands of feet. So we're probably to the closest house, we're probably eight or nine hundred feet. Thousands of feet in most directions.
Just trying to do everything we can to keep the sound down, to keep our neighbors happy.
And there has been, other than the neighbor to the west, there's who would fight anything we did. Um, there has been no complaints. We've in previous meetings, we had signed documents from all our closest neighbors saying that they were in favor of it.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks.
We'll now open this for uh public comment. Um, are there any neighborhood district chairs present? Okay, uh, we'll go ahead and open it to the general public then. Um, you'll have two minutes to comment. When your time is up, you will hear a ding and your microphone will be muted. Do we have anyone from the public that would like to comment? Okay, not seeing anyone. We'll bring it back to the commission for discussion. Sorry, what? Oh, we will close public comment and bring it back to the commission for comment.
So I've been here for all of the iterations of this project and I'm excited for them to finally be able to do what they were hoping to do. And I think it speaks volumes to the process that what we're looking at now is so much cooler than what the dream was. You know, I think that we've helped them to have a better product and they've helped us to have a better parameters of what that should look like. So I think it's awesome. I love that there's paved access. Before that was just gravel. I love that uh even the parking lot is landscaped. Um, I love that there will be bonds and fees required so that everything has to go as planned or else there the approval goes away. Um, it says if the city verifies at any section of the agritourism overlay code is not being met in the future, the use of an event center could be revoked. So like it it there's safeguards in for all the things that that planning commission was worried about before and that the public was worried about. I think they've, both the city and the Finch family have done a fabulous job of addressing those concerns. Um, I I would be happy to recommend this for approval. I think this is exactly what we envisioned and it would be, it'll be really cool to see how it unfolds and to know also that if it unfolds badly that that it's not an indefinite mistake, that it can be revoked and fixed.
Any other comments?
I think it looks really nice. I really like the way it looks. If I wasn't already married, I would get married there. Um, the the neighborhood comments, we're talking about parking, uh, parking and noise, I think were the two concerns. Um, it sounds like just location wise, the noise probably is not going to be a problem. Insulated building, um, I it's it sounds like, you know, if you're hundreds of feet away, it's kind of less of a less of a concern. And looking at the plan here, the driveway, I mean, it it looks like we got a good amount of parking. I have a hard time imagining that somebody would like park in the neighborhood and then like walk all the way down that the driveway to get to the event. So it might might, it seems like that uh has been thought thought through. So just wanted to to um address those points.
I think we worked really hard to get um the note, the music, language and all of that last time and try and get decent estimates for the parking. So I feel really good about this and I'm really happy for them. They have so much support in the neighborhood. So I think it's gonna be really nice.
Any comments on my left side here?
None, none.
Okay, are we ready for a motion?
I have two more questions that I just thought of. Is there any outdoor use allowed in this overlay zone? Would they be able to hold have parties on the lawn? And if so, are there special restrictions for outdoor uses?
No, all four of those uses can happen outside.
Okay.
Within that area.
Because of the of the hours of operation that would, like we, I remember the overlay zone has specific hours for sound, right?
Ten on weekdays, eleven on Friday and Saturday.
Okay, so that would all be under there.
Yep.
And what about on-street parking? Um, if the lot's full, are they allowed to park on that driveway along the side? Or what do we do in the inevitable oops, there's too many people here?
Where there's public parking on the street, then people permitted to use that.
Is the, is that lane lar wide enough to allow it there or would it automatically go out into the neighborhood?
I'm not sure in the area what streets allow parking where um I'd I'd have to
No, I mean the lane that they're building.
Oh.
The driveway.
No, that would just be Ingress and Egress.
Okay.
The driveway.
Honestly, I think people would park at the school next door.
Ah, okay.
Okay, are we ready for a motion? Anyone want to make it?
Okay, should we make it two for two?
Do it.
Or three for three? Okay, I make a motion that the planning commission recommend approval of the zone change for Barry and Judy Finch requesting a zone map amendment to apply the agritourism AT overlay zone to eight point eight six acres of agricultural A one point five zoned property in order to build an event center located at twenty-six oh one west, two hundred and eighty south in Provo.
I'm gonna second.
Excellent. Any discussion on the motion?
I actually just thought of another question. I'm sorry. Is there, is the AT overlay going for the entire property from east to west or just the section that has the event?
It does go on the entire property. Uh, you'll remember in the code that the use is limited to one third of that property.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Any other discussion on the motion? Okay, let's start voting. Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote aye, so it passes unanimously. Go for the third item.
So I'll make a motion that um we approve the proposed project plan. Finch Family LLC requests project planner approval for a new wedding event building in a proposed A one point five AT agricultural with agritourism overlay zone located at twenty-six oh one west, two hundred and eighty south, Provo.
Paul second.
Any discussion on the motion? Okay, we'll start the voting.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote aye, so it passes unanimously. We have a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
Go to second.
Second.
All in favor?
Thanks for staying so long for this to be heard.
Yeah, sorry.